Moving to the second, I'll bear say aye.
Aye.
Close name, motion passes. Anybody here that'd like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Next special report and presentation. So this is a proclamation for National Business Women's Week. States were asked since nineteen thirty-eight, National Business Women's Week has officially been celebrated the third full week in October each year. And whereas the city, Baldwin City Business Professional Women celebrate the third full week in October each year. And whereas the Baldwin City Business Professional Women formed June nineteen fifty-nine. And now therefore I, KC seven, I'm mayor of the city of Baldwin City, Kansas. With the support of the city council, we hereby proclaim October seventeen twenty-one through October twenty-third twenty-one as Business Professional Women. Thank you. Next item is whole business, the valuable.
Yeah, um, so currently we've been, um, uh, reaching out, seeing if there are any other potential occupants of the building which are on programming. Trying to find anybody who would, uh, fulfill these in the building, um, occupy staff, um, program. So, um, the first, first group we kind of reached out to and only group we've ever asked to, that was the Boys and Girls Club, to see if they had any interest in it. They had asked us to, um, send out some kind of a public outreach poll, to kind of see, um, some basic questions that they sent over. If, if the community would have any interest in using, um, what is the girls club have to play use for the, for the program. Um, we got, how many people's to get back from that?
It's still ongoing.
It's, no.
They wanted it over to Friday, I think.
Okay. I think last night. So that's where we're kind of at there. Um, KC, you've kind of, uh, been out rallying private money. Um, contributions to, to see if we can, uh, mitigate some of the costs of the building.
Yeah, we, so far we've got two hundred and fifty-five. But I'm gonna stop us here. That we did not approve.
Oh, yeah.
Let's move back and go ahead. We've had.
I knew we approved the consent.
If we move to the second, I'll bear say aye.
Aye.
Close name, motion passes. Sorry, pass. I'm bad.
Yeah, that's kind of where we're at with it. It's pretty, pretty simple. Does anyone have any questions? Comments, suggestions?
I think we're getting changes to the.
Um, I think we, we took out the, um, the direct commission so that it didn't put like a retribution facility. We took out the school deployment of, um, same.
If you still could, I remember you could still do like volleyball, just couldn't do like a track.
Correct.
You'll have to still do the posts.
Yeah.
Get the elevator beam gone and actually look a little more storage, um, or just be a little less about it. Sure. We did have some discussions about, um, maybe bringing Jay back. And Scott actually has a suggestion about doing, uh, making it more of a walking path, kind of like how Paul's gym is at Baker, to work into the back and around the gym, back where those offices are. Um, senior competitor on the back, kind of more, uh, senior accommodating, more than walking type. Really, suggestions or changes? Open.
So once the survey is complete and played, it goes back to Boys and Girls Club and meeting with them?
Um, yeah, I think they want to know what that, what that data is and then get back to their board and then, and just know what their answer is and what their potential commitment will be and then.
Is that to be like an after school?
Yeah, a little bit of, maybe they were bold, they, um, but yeah, they have some, some after school, uh, that they're covering. Open the weekends, obviously, um, really a decision.
Either high.
Right.
Right, so let's say each group is not covered by the.
Uh, right, right, yeah, it's two. And then we've got, I mean, it's in that, in, in, I should probably, I mean, it's a little, it's all, I was, you know, the, 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 the. They try to parlay and really compliment on the stewardess who does, um, her bodies, um, first part of, uh, the, 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 the. The survey shows that demand is involved. But I'd like to do this, not only here for the council, but ask questions of them, so that's, um, we can, because I don't know, there's, 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 um, but if they're in the, um, stewardess, so that they can see what type of services they're able to offer right now. I thought personally, Superman would go in and lead, indicated that it would be nice to have that a lot of, but, um, but we need to know that we will be detailed, with, 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 and they will, and they will, and they will. They talked very surface level about staffing. They would obviously be needing to do a campaign worth of money for that because we indicated to them that we, for, you know, we would utilize our services.
Carry away at this point, we don't know what's going to be eligible. It might be water, suspected water wastewater project also in the second bill. Um, that being said, Rob will tell you that we have endless amount of water and wastewater and such type of projects anyway. So I'm not sure it really makes any difference to us, but we could probably spend a lot of money, uh, working on projects in the shell put off, uh, over the past ten, twenty years. Yeah. So I guess the, the caution is we know what we're going to get under first one. We're going to get our pot of money around seven hundred thousand, which we already have half of that. The second one's a great unknown at this point, but I don't want to really set up any conflicts on what can be eligible on the first one, uh, under second, you know, so we need to be a little bit cautious on how we manage this money. The first round, we know we really don't have to commit to any project till like twenty twenty four, and we have to spend it by twenty six. So we're not pushing, uh, for us about spending money in that special area with the next one. So federal government is being pretty lenient on the reporting and on where to commit these things. So there's a long time horizon. The next one again, it's going to be a complete unknown. We don't, we don't know what's going on with that. So, but what we wanted to do, and I guess was to update the council on what could be going forward. We know we have, um, just a raft of water and wastewater projects. The industrial structure has been in the ground for probably a hundred years, maybe more, some of it. Um, we're going back to early twentieth century on some of this. We did replace the interceptor, the east side interceptor here recently, and we, we did water mines, I think about four or five years ago. We took out a lot of old cast iron, and so we keep doing that. Um, but this is a continuous process. The window of opportunity now is probably better than it's ever been. We're probably not going to see another massive industrial build coming from the federal government on this level, probably to the rest of our lives. I don't know, but given the sky, it wants a lifetime opportunity. So I guess the caution right now here is a little, little slow on the twenty eighth, which you're probably also aware, we're going to be listening to citizen, go through strategic planning session, and, um, you know, there could be some other priorities and ideas that come out of that, but we know we've got these here, and Rob will go then. So take it away, Rob. So I was tasked with kind of look at some projects that I thought might be good candidates to the criteria for these ARP funds, and as one of the second, the list is long, and a lot of these folks have already heard about from the capital plan and strategic planning. But, uh, just run through them real quick, and just kind of a higher, I just, there's going to need to be a lot more discussion and problems, and it's, uh, and you do it carefully and cautiously, because seven hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, but I just, I just added this up real quick, and I've, I've got over a million dollars on this thing, and I think this is just the stuff that I think we qualify for. Focusing primarily on water, wastewater, and stormwater. Um, and so the, the nineteen hundred road project, if you actually remember that Franklin County looking possibly coming in, and so I thought that was slipping through our fingers. They did contact me about six weeks ago. I'm thinking maybe they got some of this ARP funding too. Yes, there's some map and some customer information, and so maybe that may be coming back, um, hopefully, but, you know, I want to keep it on the list just in case it doesn't. And so that leaves us in item number two, which is replacing the old water line. Um, it's approximately six thousand four hundred feet, about a hundred fifty thousand dollars on that project, and keep in mind, these are, these numbers are good ones, you know, when I put this together. Look, it's all centers, um, if the water pumping station's in way right now, it's fifty three thousand. Um, water line extension, the fire tree up north four hundred road, this gets fire tree its second, uh, feed, which it does not have now, and it means this is a life safety issue right now. Fire tree estates fed off of one feed for that new subdivision. And so if it's shut off early by the hardware store, and there happens to be a fire around Ashland Court or Moore's them, we, we, so that's what this, this extension up north four hundred road is the second tie point, and solve that, that's about eighty thousand on that project. Um, extending the, the twelve inch main up sixteen hundred road, it's about seven thousand feet from north four hundred to the west water tower. You've got, I've heard the issues with the west water tower. If we add this line, we could move water in any direction, any time we wanted. We could move it west and north instead of from north to west, like we have to do now. So that's another project, that's, yeah, I'd probably north of four fifty on that one. That's going to depend on the soil. Um, and if we're into the highway, it's twelve inch line, so it's not cheap to install. Um, I have the, uh, stormwater, uh, this is a stormwater issue, Portion Lane, the road crossing there, I have this budgeted for twenty twenty two. That, that road crossing is collapsing, and, uh, either way, this, this is going to get done in twenty twenty two. We, we have to get this done. It's about, uh, fifty thousand dollars on that one. Eleventh and fifty six highway, I don't know if you folks have noticed that intersection, but when they get all the ditching and they widen that out, it makes a sharp bend to the south. It is constantly, while we fixed it a couple of times, we've asked the state for some of our engineers to come down and help us. Um, we're hoping that when eleven street becomes a truck route, and, and that all goes down, they can give you time to address this. There again, it's another, it's another stormwater issue that we're looking at, uh, having to deal with. Uh, wastewater, as you know, has got several things going on. Um, we need to continue doing manhole rehab, aging pumps and motors down there, you know, twenty five plus thousand dollars a year, we need to keep investing in that, so we keep getting these fairs and getting some of this equipment replaced. The last thing on the list, and I, I don't know, this is a bit of a stretch, but we need to figure out what we're going to do as far as it's like. Um, it really, it really is, uh, it's looking bad. Um, and there again, it's a long discussion. I know it's hard losing them to have, but, um, and I know that kind of, that kind of went hand in hand with maybe what was going to happen with that new water line, which is still a little bit up in the air, so at some point, we, we'd like to sit down and discuss that, so that's just kind of a higher review of some projects that we're looking at, and as I said, it's going to take a lot, a lot more discussion. Do you have any questions?
I do want that he does, we want, um, was it that intersection part of the sidewalk?
About the fifty six highway?
Yeah, I thought it was going something, part of that, or whatever it is.
I don't know if it extends out to that, but that, that's tricky, because it's like a sixty forty, it's part of that, it's on the state, part of the towers, and I've tried multiple times to get the folks down here to, to look at it, to come down and look at it and see if they have any ideas, because what they did actually caused this.
I could say. I could score the guy's foot. That's, that's, that's.
Certainly it's going, it's going to have to be at some point, whether it's that or when, when you start widening, and talking about eleven street becoming a truck route. It's going to have to be dealt with, and then if, if it gets away with us, if it gets away from us, we'll have to pull this stream, so we can get it repaired.
So this was a list of things that you felt could qualify, and that seven hundred thousand dollars of funding last day you missed in Spring Creek Lake? Could be a stretch, or are you saying that maybe some of that funding could work to work possibly rehabbing that situation out there?
I'm not sure before I put it on there, because it's just something that's for me. I don't know, I don't know if it's, uh, probably not, not actually, but to.
That, that wouldn't be a stress, it's, it's mainly your recreation.
It is, you know, just like the stormwater, water runoff, drainage, if there's anything that could, that could probably, if they're running after, that we might be able to find to get this with the project, share the site, to rehab and clean the stormwater property.
Speaking of stormwater, Ryan, do we know, would this money cover a stormwater, uh, study for the community?
Yeah, I, I believe it would, and, uh, that was a little ambiguous when, when they first came out with the guidelines, but after a lot of back and forth I've seen, uh, stormwater does fall under the first round, uh, a study, which I don't think we've ever done before. A, a full study of our entire city, because we just approached this as region by region, north is the highway, south is the highway, and everybody, of course, cares about their neighborhood, and so we respond to it in that way, but the drainage affects the entire city. We have drainage problems that I think are, are public works guys, we're, you know, almost every day, someone has a drainage problem throughout the city. It doesn't matter if it's raining two inches or we haven't had a rain in, in two months, there are still drainage problems out there, and that's just the way, it's part of our ge- geography here, and it's part of the way the city was built, and so we, we need to, and we do need a comprehensive, um, drainage study and plan, and, and we need to look forward on it.
We talked about it, I know, we talked about it. Yeah, I'm just didn't know what a study like that, one, the cost, and two, if it would be, if it could be covered by this, this funds, and also the other question is, would it be easier to bond money or do the repairs to like the water lines and different bins than it would be for a drainage? The money on the drainage. I've never heard of a city bonding money to fix or correct drainage issues, but obviously the word bonding money for water lines and everything like that, so, you know, I guess those were some of the questions I would have, just to know that, you know, hey, if we're going to spend the money and we know we can have drainage issues, it's going to be easier for us to deal with these problems of different bonds versus this problem of here, or this money that seems to be a little bit much for us.
It sounds like a lot of money, but it'll go with, because these are, these are some high dollars they've taken out of this.
Yeah, I don't even know what a study would cost like that, to give the job in place.
Very, very lucky to have it, and I think it's really going to help give us that boost in the arm that we needed, and get some of these projects done. We've, we've come a long way, like Glenn said, the east interceptor and the west interceptors in, I mean, we've come a long way, water line improvements. The north, we don't want to, we don't want to forget about the north water line, because that, that is our lifeline. I mean, it is, and it's aging, and at some point, it's, it's going to have to be worked through.
So is this something, Rob, I mean, what, as a staff, um, what are your intentions or what is your plan to formulate a plan as a reason funds for the north?
I think, I think it starts at the committee level, I'll take it to the utility committee. Um, we need to get, we need to get an itemized, I can order, I guess, of these projects that we've identified, and what's most important to you as the city council. Nail down some bids, get some good firm bids on it, and then move forward with these things one at a time, and it's not going to be a quick project, but like Glenn said, they're not leaning on us as far as the timeline. We've got time to do it and do it right.
So is something we want to start out working through the committee, kind of start working that, and we need to, to work that team?
I think, I think that's probably the best way to do it, because public works, I think utility committees probably the most familiar with these projects that I listed today, and I know they've heard them, they've all heard them multiple times. We keep going over and over them, because I, I don't want you guys to forget about them, they're, they're out there, and we're, we're budgeting for them, you know, like the, the fire tree, the second water line and fire tree, and replacing the road crossing it, that, that works your mind, we're just doing them as we can afford to do them, but it's just, it's very slow, and you can pick off one a year or something.
But that sounds like we probably need to start, very soon to identify our list, to start working on, it's going to take some planning time, I mean, two years, it seems like a long time, but it's really not.
I would like to make some engineering, also, too.
This is just kind of a big picture, I'm just going to throw it out there and see what sticks, but we used to get our water from Creek Lake, from Spring Creek Lake, it's still a spring bed, and is there any, have we ever looked at what to take to treat that water and mitigate some of the costs that we get for certain things?
We did, we had some engineer look at it back when we were building with the water at Clintonville, and his indication to us was, we don't have a water plant to treat it, so that, that would be an interesting kind of thing, right?
Didn't stand. So.
You can cross that one. I'm going to keep doing it though. I'm going to keep throwing stuff out there.
Yeah. And then his other concern, if I remember correctly, was that there wasn't sufficient water in the ground anymore to supply the community like it did back in the day.
Right.
So that was kind of the two takeaways I had from when we had those conversations with him back then, but that fifteen million kind of stuck with me.
Those wells have been capped, we capped them years ago after all the work we could find.
Is any other questions or discussions with Rob on this? I just want to kind of start getting the discussion going, the council get in your guys' minds, and then utility committee can kind of run with it, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Sounds good.
All right, thanks, Rob. Next item, council committee reports, budget and finance, Scott.
Um, two topics, one of them was the power building, we covered that in old business. Um, and then the other thing we discussed was the utility bill restructuring. Uh, we asked, uh, Ben and Baker Utility to take a look at, and hopefully we can see that Friday on the next meeting, Glenn, we can see, take a look at moving the debt, all the debt associated with providing that service, say wastewater or water, um, and moving that into the meter fee, and what that would do to the rates, and kind of look at some scenarios on the bills, you know, low and high, and to see, see what that looks like from a citizen perspective, and when that moves out of the, you know, your water rate and into your utility or your meter fee. So that's the next step is to, to do then, and then we bring back to the council, just, this is what it looks like, you know, this is the impact it would have on a, a low user or a no user, if they just had a meter, didn't use anything. You know, the rate might go from five dollars to ten dollars on the meter fee, and, and just kind of look at impact across the spectrum of citizens, and then decide if that's something we want to go try to do for the new year. Talked about potential looking at some billing software, you know, because some of this may, you know, need to get out of the manual, you know, manual aspect and have more flexibility, because as you add meters, then theoretically, if you haven't had any more debt, the meter fee should go down for everybody. So we talked about how often should that happen, you know, does the excess go into, say, the, you know, reserve fund until it gets to a certain level, and maybe after a year or two, then we, we reduce it, or do we just do it every year? So those are the things we talked about, and billing software might impact that. If it's on us to do it, we may want to not do it every year, um, because our meters probably aren't going to move that much, and the, the amount would be fractions of a dollar for everybody, probably on an annual basis, so maybe we set a limit, when it moves a dollar, then that's when it, it comes out of the reserve or wherever it moves into, um, you know, and we can move into the, the, the meter fee reduction, right? So, so our budget would, would use the reserve instead of, say, that extra dollar or that we got from everybody that we're, we're giving back because the fee went down, because we, maybe some debt fell off, we have more meter. So we're just trying to think of all potential scenarios and how it impacted, and then just kind of bring it in for discussion, say, this is what it looks like, what do you think? And then move forward with it, and I think it just makes it clearer for everybody about what, what it costs us to go do this, these infrastructure pieces, and how they can see that in their bill. Targeted, try to get that done by the end of the year as a council, so we need to bring something back to you guys for discussion here, you know, fairly soon. That was it, and next meeting Friday at seven forty-five, second floor of City Hall.
We haven't met since last meeting, um, we meet at four o'clock on the twenty fifth. Public safety, Susan.
Uh, we have not met, our next meeting is November ninety-four.
Public works, Julie.
Um, the summer street repairs are mainly complete, the chip and seal streets have been swept, and the Vance brothers are going to come back to perform some spot repairs, uh, winterizing the sprinkler system downtown and at the pool, also the restaurants will be winterized at all the parks, and will be closed, uh, around November fif- uh, first. The new truck is ordered, uh, for the water department, and the estimated time of arrival will hopefully be in March of twenty twenty-two. Uh, we haven't gotten a firm number from the county on the sixth and high intersection repair, and we discussed the substation location. Right now, we have three locations that are being looked at. At our next committee meeting, we should have prices, uh, on the locations that we picked out, and we will bring that to the council for consideration and discussion. Uh, the next meeting is November eleventh at nine o'clock.
November eleventh, is the city hall open that day?
It's at Veterans.
It's Veterans Day.
Yeah, Veterans Day, yeah, we're, we're not.
Okay, well, I'll think about that.
To be.
And let you know. I'll let Amber know what I change it to.
Julie, on the sixth and high, I mean, what are the options that, that were being considered for repair, I mean, just repair the brick, or is there something else being considered?
Well, Rob can probably address that better than I can, but they're, they're wanting to, well, well, I can do it.
Hey, so what we, uh, what we looked at doing, um, we, we started looking at this months ago, we knew the intersection's getting in bad shape, and I don't know if you guys noticed or not, but we, we temporarily put some asphalt in there, because there was some concerns raised about it being potential tripping hazard and the bands turning there, and so, uh, it's a band-aid, it's a patch, but it really turned out much better than I thought it was going to, and it really doesn't look that bad. Um, and it's way better than the, so, um, but in order to fix that intersection properly, as much traffic as it gets across there, it really needs to be done in concrete. Um, I went out and got a bid from Amino Brothers, who did all the sidewalk on Elm Street for us, and, uh, I'll, I'll tell you, they're the company that we would want, they could get in here, they could get it done, and get it done right, and it was about eighty thousand to do that intersection, but it would be taking it back, clear back past the stop sign where that bad spot is, putting in the crosswalks, laying the brick in along the edges of the crosswalks to make it match what's already there, like on the other side of the street, the west side, and then pour, uh, concrete to concrete on the sixth street side, but that's an intersecting street, and so it's actually, it's, it's technically partially a county road, partially a Baldwin City street, and so what the, the county proposed was they would come out and measure it and work up a bid of what it would cost to put that intersection back in asphalt, and that would be their contribution to the project, and we could do from that point whatever we wanted to with it. So, um, my, my opinion is it needs to go back in concrete, and, and that would be, um, a nice segue into, hey, this is what this could look like, let's continue on with this, um, into our downtown.
You're talking concrete, and bricks go back on top of the concrete?
No, it'd be, it'd be, the only brick that would be back in that intersection is kind of like it looks on the west side right now, where the crosswalks are lined in bricks down each side, so the east side would look like the west side, and then, and north-south would look just like they do now, it'd be a painted crosswalk. That gets a lot of traffic, I, you know, and we could, it's just, it's terribly expensive, you know, as we talked about rehabbing brick streets, you're really building two streets, you're building a concrete street, and you're building a brick street on top of it, it's, it's terribly expensive. Asphalt, I don't think would, I don't think that would hold up to that type of traffic. Um, and so it was just an option, I wanted to get some numbers and, and present it to the committee, see what they thought, and if there's any interest in moving forward with this.
So as we look at the brick street plan, it kind of almost sets the, sets the marker, right, because you now have orphaned brick, solid on high, right? And, you know, I'm not saying that's good, bad, or otherwise, but it's going to be something you're probably not going to want to go back in after concrete goes in and brick it. So I think we just have to be thinking about that as we make this decision, if we're not going to make the holistic for street plan decision, at the same time, this will definitely impact it.
Yeah, we can, we can keep working on it, see what options we have, what mind, just seeing what concrete is and, and brick on top, just to kind of get an idea, I mean, if we're going to start having that conversation, that's a small area to at least kind of see, hey, this is what this extra was.
We could, we could do something like stamping it too, we could stamp it and make it look like brick, stain concrete.
So what is the plan to think about strategically, brick streets and making a decision so that you can start trying to fund it, tell you, decide what you're going to do, and start saving for that, it's never even started?
Yeah, I think our intent, my, well, what I thought, or my thought was let Main Street kind of get up and rolling a little bit, and then, uh, and then kind of take it that avenue, because my understanding from Main Street is we could leverage Main Street to help get some grants in for brick streets, so.
Certainly makes your case better.
Yeah, so that's kind of, that's kind of.
So we have a timeline for that? Have we talked to her about?
She's worked, I know she's working on getting the committees together now, um, getting enough people to come in, I know she's been going to training for the last six, eight months, um, on Main Street, so I imagine this next year, we're going to really see it hopefully kick off.
Well, I, you've been through this a few times, are, are we close to kind of seeing some rewards?
Yeah, we are, they did that market study first, and then they, I, I have not seen the results of that yet, so once they do that with former committees, and, and the committees have to go through, uh, training also, and so that, that's part of the program, so, um, and that, that'll help us identify some priorities, but the brick streets, they were for a hundred years or whatever, and if we do it right, they'll be there for another hundred or more, it's going to come down to how much you want to pay for.
I think we just need to go and recruit, hire that guy that did it up north.
Yeah, right.
Just do him, and.
Yeah, I think he's right. Uh, yeah, but, but this intersection, I think, is a good opportunity, you're talking about sixth street, we can actually price it as, what would it be as asphalt, what would it be as concrete, what would it be as concrete and brick?
Yeah.
Do all three, and then you can see what you're getting into here as far as what, what's it going to look like per block, per intersection, per square foot, or however you want to slice it going forward, and do you want to pay that premium price for the brick streets, because that's what's really going to come down.
Yeah, plus the maintenance, we need to bolt that on, it's, it's the lifetime cost, right?
Right, right, and there is an argument to be made that, uh, when you do that over a lifetime, or fifty to a hundred, hard to go and stretch it out, brick streets will actually come out as your most cost effective, because they last the longest. Asphalt will be the cheapest, but it lasts the least, the concrete's in between, so you really want to think long term, and there's a lot of studies that show the brick streets are actually worth the cost. But do we want to pay that upfront? Do we not? How do we want to do that? You know, those are going to be the hard questions.
Yeah, I think having the numbers will help, but I think to me, it's almost like, you know, it's a non-binary decision, but just like on the sidewalk plan, you kind of have a plan of what the council strategically thinks they want to have as your, if brick streets, if any, and the rest are going to move to concrete or, or whatever, just to have a plan that's, that's kind of agreed upon, and then the funding becomes how you, how you're going to fund it, and then, you know, you've got to start that, and, and maybe you do a block every year, or every two years, or, but, you know, to me, it's that vision of what do we want to end up with as a community in ten years, fifteen years? Same brick streets we have, just done, redone better, that's one option, no brick streets, that's the other extreme, or somewhere in between, but that, to me, is what I would hope we, we come up with as a, as a part of the strategic plan, along with Main Street, about what they think is doable or optimal as well.
And I think that's what we learned from Holton at that conference, that they've passed a sales tax, I think for the last twenty years, they, each year they do one or two blocks a year, whatever they can do, so it's taken them that long just to get.
Rob, how's it at Brook layer?
It's been a while.
They are high school kids, too. Of course, labor shortage is everywhere right now.
Right, yeah.
And that's what they would do, I think they've been doing it for twenty-seven years, so.
I want to get a lot of community input on that one as well.
Oh, yeah.
I think something we need to maybe look at even before that is, um, along with the Main Street program, is trying to get these, the brick insets on the sidewalks downtown restored, because we did a lot of walking this last week downtown, some people even setting up and tearing down, and so you, it looks different, driving by them than actually walking on them. There's some spots that, that's really becoming troublesome, and I'm, I'm starting to worry about them being tripping hazards, maybe even some, some other issues, um, and so here again, how do we fix it? Do we go back with, with the brick again? Do we just pour concrete? Do we stamp it, stain it, make it look like it is right now, except it's concrete, and it'll, it'll hold up better than the brick has?
When we did our sidewalk project, we approached Garrison about that, and I don't remember what the money was to.
We got a bid for it too, um, but it's, you know, it's, that's been, you know, over a year ago, so we'd have to rebid it, but it's, it's like Scott said, we, we have to start somewhere, and I've said that too, let's just do a block, and then show everybody what it can look like, new curb, gutter, new storm drains, if you're going to rehab them, fine, let's rehab them, if not, let's do it in asphalt, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking ninth street here, because it's, it's one of the worst.
Yeah, I think you definitely want to pull those citizens in.
Right, let the people know, because it's absolutely going to change the traffic patterns, people will quit using tenth street, they'll start using ninth. It's much wider, it'd be a brand new street. They may not, they may not want it, I, I don't know.
Right, not that, I agree, but we need to come to kind of a. We need to come to kind of a decision, and, and can always be changed, but let's start with something, get that feedback. And I think Ninth Street's the obvious place to start.
Well, we start working on that, Public Works as well.
Yeah.
And start formulating a plan on how to do community outreach and different things.
I've, I've got bids on that too, of course, they're outdated now, but I, I did go out and quote that all three ways, asphalt, concrete, and then to restore the bricks, one block at a time. It's expensive.
Yep.
Legislative, Brian.
Public Report.
City administrative staff comments, anything?
Uh, just a reminder again that the, uh, our planning exercise comes on the twenty-eighth, and I think you've all been given a task of contacting a few friends or wherever you think might be appropriate to attend, and round them up and bring them to that meeting. We'd like to get a good cross-section of, um, people in Baldwin City to participate in that, so.
What was her recommendation on us going?
We brought that up and.
Participating.
Yeah, I, I didn't think it was a good idea, and she said absolutely it was a good idea.
For us to participate?
Yes. And I, I just don't feel that, that you're gonna get as objective of a, of a feedback if you're sitting right there.
I agree.
If I wear my Kramer for mayor shirt, probably.
And you say one word about what you think, then it's, you're just influencing people. So I personally don't plan to attend, because I don't think it's.
I, I agree with that, I'd almost just let it, let it go.
I would like to attend, because I would like to hear what the people are saying. Because I think, I mean, I, I would attend just to watch, I wouldn't attend to be part of the conversation necessarily, but.
Man, is it recorded?
Yeah, aren't we supposed to get all the?
Yeah, I'd love to be able to observe, I don't know that it will be recorded.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be recorded, but yeah, just to sort of, I, I've been through this a number of times, it, it's, it's not a problem for elected officials to be there, nobody's, I mean, you're just another person at the table, really. I mean, don't, don't worry about it, I mean, nobody, nobody changes what they say, or that, I mean, that, you know, and whether it's Baldwin City or.
Glenn thinks we're not intimidated.
Yeah, that's fair, nobody, nobody.
I'll defer to somebody that's been there.
Yeah, I've been through this a number of times, and it's, it's, has a structure to it, but it's fairly free-flowing and a little bit inflowing, and it's meant to be that way. So it's, it's nothing that's meant to be sort of top-down drip, but this is a bottom-up exercise. And people get into that, and they, and they don't really care who's sitting at the table and whatever, they just don't.
Speaking to Todd and Patty today, um, they asked us to set up a separate table for elected officials.
Okay, so, yeah, that's right, yes, I forgot, we're gonna, so we're gonna actually put you at the kids' table.
That makes a lot of sense. As an elected official, I'm gonna have my chance to provide my own feedback in a much bigger way. I'm not sure doing it at the table is helpful at all. I just don't think it is.
I, I would just like, I plan on to attend, so unless you absolutely tell me not to.
No, I, I'm, I'm encouraging you all to, to attend, really.
I just wanna hear what the people say.
We're just observers.
Yes, as observers, they're, yeah, right.
I don't think, you know, you'll hear all of the information unless you're there.
Yeah, but what kind of information's gonna be brought out of this? I mean, there's gotta be some data that's gathered here, that's really what we're trying to get.
That's the point, isn't it? I mean, isn't that why we're doing it?
It is, so if I'm not there, does that mean I'm not gonna get any of the data, because I didn't hear it?
No, I'm, I'm expecting Patty to give us a lot of information.
So I'm expecting to get the information from her, same as that I would give her if I were there listening to it.
However, I'm not sure we really got a lot of information from the other time that she was here. So I figured if I'm there, I can hear what's going on, and then I don't have to rely on her to do it, even though we did pay her a good fee to do it, so.
That's fair, makes sense.
Council comments? Only comment I have is, obviously, we don't have a work session next week, since we talked about the infrastructure stuff tonight, so.
We don't have anything else to talk about?
Not in the work sessions right now.
Really? Okay.
Do you have some suggestions? Sounds like you did.
Well, it just seems like we talk a lot about different things, it seems like we could discuss things even further. I don't know, you're the mayor, I don't, I mean, you're the one that says it, so.
No executive session needed, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I move with your adjourn?
Second.
Been moved to second, I'll favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay, motion passes, we're adjourned.